Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
I don't understand.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got a motion to adopt the agenda at present.
No.
Any discussion? Yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I gotta hand myself. All right, we had a motion for second minutes of Monday, June 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections?
Recording in progress.
Second?
No. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, including the minutes of June 3rd, say aye. Aye and a close. Um, okay, I don't know whether it's Dick here on?
He's not.
So, we wanna, we wanna put postpone that as he posted him on, or?
I mean, I think we can still discuss it. Did you get the letter that he wrote?
Yes. Okay, so, did everybody get the letter from Dick and the letter from the state? You know, why, whatever. So, what do we wanna do about that?
Well, um, Dick called me a couple of weeks ago, um, and asked if I had, um, or the board, um, myself had read the letters, and I said, "What are you talking about?" Because I didn't know where to give out the letters, and then I received the letters. Um, and he explained in detail what was going on with the culvert, um, that it's too small, and when they have heavy rain, it overflows and goes into his both, both the barns. And to, to the extent that he's had to hire folks to get the silt and debris out of the barn, and the big barn, um, the water is coming in, and it's starting to roll that may be in the front. Um, concerning because, um, barn, um, used the barn for hay. And he did not understand why he couldn't get the culvert in this year, because, um, Bill had mentioned to him, we required the phone call that he wasn't getting the rain. Um, and then I mentioned to Morgan what was going on, um, the conversation I had with him, and he's, he's very upset. Um, and apparently, but there's a culvert above his property coming out, Woodchuck Hill, which also needs repair. I think Colby can speak to that. Um, and he, he must something done. He, he said, um, that culvert's gonna, that culvert has to go in. Um, both buildings, all buildings on his land are historic, um, under registration. Um, and he has, uh, receipts of what he spent so far. He didn't give me a number, but it's down there.
There, there might be a solution. Uh, talk to Morgan, I don't know, have you searched it any further, Morgan?
About that grant?
Yeah, there is a grant out there, it's a couple of million bucks, I think. And it's, it's for, like, um, if you have a building that got flooded, you can buy it. If there's, uh, danger to the building, um, I don't know exactly all the language, but I actually would go look at it, because that, that might qualify. If his barn, store of barn, meaning, a well.
I think it is for land that the town wants to purchase
Yeah.
in preparation for a flood event. So, I don't think this culvert in particular is a good advice, because he doesn't wanna sell his barn and that piece of land.
No, but I thought it was also for others, but no, that was the one thing.
No, it was all just for, yeah.
And yes, Morgan to check that out, too. So, I'm hoping the board would, um, look into this.
Well, does, does anybody know what your estimate was?
Colby, can you?
Thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay. So, if we wanna do that, we have to find thirty-six thousand dollars somewhere in the budget, there's not budget for it.
There's another figure.
Well, that's the total price of the trucks, materials, the wave blocks, the culverts, the hydro seed, this fishing's coming, the, we sew line it, and trucks, time, escalator time, and then media and light time.
This was also priced in October, so far as fall, so.
Well, that, yeah.
Materials might achieve.
The culvert then, three hundred and seventy dollars a foot, and now, I'm, I'm, I didn't call, even get a chance to call it to J P, but I'm guessing it's probably a four hundred dollar a foot now.
Yeah, probably good at four more than.
Yeah.
At least nine percent more, probably.
How, how big is it, forty-five feet?
It's a forty.
Yeah, forty feet long, and then it was, uh, five feet, it was a five, it was a five-foot squish, it was like four, four feet column, six feet wide.
Are they gonna help you with the grant the next time, and?
Yeah.
Juice it up a little bit?
Yeah, so I now have a contact person that can come in and, and walk me through it.
Is there any Band-Aid or anything up there to help them out? No?
So, like, all this noise on there, you know, they just can't take it.
Right now, it's a three-foot culvert.
Yeah.
Diameter.
What would you add to the five, what about five footed one in the three quarter?
Yeah.
That's why, but then, well, once, then after, I would.
I don't think something's changed ever before, but I don't, it's just they can't take it. And then plus, there's a little bit of water runs down the road, but they're not like huge, it runs down, but the culvert probably above it could be replaced, too.
I'm gonna check it.
Even one, yeah, the one at the bottom of Woodchuck Hill, we also talked about picking another one in, uh, from Woodchuck Hill down, you know, we come into the same outlet as this big one that we talked about with the Hudson, to help stop the water running down by the barn.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but that wasn't added to this either, that was put a separate bill.
But I mean, there's no question it should be done, but, I mean, normally, we do these culvert for a grant.
What about reserve money, you know?
I don't know what we would have the reserve money, and what reserve money we will end up with would be part of our fifteen percent of our grant list for unanticipated, or taxes. Also, it's over from August to
And don't forget.
into August, a recommendation by Brad.
And don't forget, we have, we have a million-dollar bridge. So, if there's, if there's extra funds that, that lessen that.
Right, because we're already having to get borrowing, we're paying seven and a half thousand.
Well, I guess I wanna advocate for Mr. DeRogger, longtime resident, never seems to complain, and all of a sudden, he's been six years without being done with a barn. Um, you know, he's one of the good old boys, and I, I'd like to see the town get more culvert. That's one thing.
I mean, it's very simple, we can do it, where's the money gonna come from, that question?
Then, who's gonna be the next one that comes along?
Exactly.
I've got damage from water coming out of this culvert, you're gonna help me out. And there could be no end for it, once you stack.
Well, I don't think he has the means financially to put it though.
It sounds like next time the grant comes wrong, so we're gonna have a better shot at it. I mean, I know it's not guaranteed, but, and what's the timeline on it?
Yeah, I think it's not a default. I think it's yearly, and applications are usually due in December.
It's a good issue.
So, we wouldn't be able to do any work until a year from now.
But it could, it could be, could be done next year.
But it's not a guarantee that the grant will go through.
No.
Is that how we replace all the culverts is the, the grants?
All the culverts.
But this is kinda a big culvert, huh?
Culverts are pretty big, yeah. I mean, it's not like a culvert that you play in the island and roast.
We're doing one on North Arthur Road that's more popular, but it's half the length of this one. Um, um, we can out, I don't know, when's our culvert coming, Jim?
I don't.
It's not that much of a money.
Yeah, I don't, we try, I don't know.
Yeah, no way we can buy it out of culvert budget, so. If we did, it'd screw us for the rest of that year, we wouldn't be able to buy culverts for other projects, so.
Yeah, remember, we do have a culvert budget, you know, that'll be yours.
How do you, how do you estimate that budget?
The culvert budget?
Yeah.
I don't know how you estimate, we just, that's, we just have it there, so we can buy more culverts.
But how do you determine what culverts you're gonna go in?
Well, well, if they're completely failed, if you don't replace them, they're failed.
But this one has failed?
I don't, well, the one down the dix, that one hasn't failed, it's just saying it's not big enough. But it's, that's a completely different scenario, that's not a, I'm talking like fifteen, eighteen-inch culvert, not a five-foot culvert.
Well, I mean, large culverts are usually through the capital budget.
Yeah.
And they, and they try to schedule them by knowing what needs to be done within so many years. They can tell which ones are failing, usually, in my business and estimate. So, the larger ones usually go into the capital budget, smaller ones, usually buy three-year supplies, and small culverts get
Yeah.
bought from that.
You can't extend that culvert budget on that, because it would be, what would you do with the rest of the year, and we needed a culvert for all of that?
So, this culvert wouldn't go on a capital budget?
No, it'd go to the capital, it can't go on a culvert, but.
I, I think the best you can do is, is do it next year, either through a grant or through the capital budget.
Morgan, could you check to see if, either through the Vermont League of Cities, or one of the regional commission? If there's some kind of grants, if there is, this is a historic building, you know?
Yeah.
That makes a difference, I mean, this barn's on the national, where there's been historic places, so it may make a difference, I mean, it could be destroyed by this, so.
See, that's why I thought that grant, Morgan, might, might, you might be able to fit it in with that one there.
All, I haven't contacted the, the person that sent it out, so I'll, I'll.
I'd like to contact them, just, and explain the situation.
Yeah. But I'll look for evidence if that doesn't work out.
And I'd like to go on record that whatever you're doing or pursuing, that, that Dick has knowledge of that.
Yeah.
Because one of the big factors was, no one was talking to him and informing him. Um, he was promised by Bill that he's gonna go in there.
And that's unfortunate, because it was never guaranteed that funds were available.
Well, that was, we didn't know that.
I know.
I, I spoke to him earlier and told him we were applying for a grant for that culvert, and if we got it, we would do it this year. I, I told him.
But he didn't hear from us or Morgan, heard from somebody else.
Well, he heard it from me, because I told him that earlier. And, and at that time, that grant looked like he was gonna get it.
But they weren't.
I didn't tell him that we had the grant, I told him we applied for the grant.
So, why, why don't we, why don't we table this and put it on the next agenda, and let's see if we can't find any, um, funding sources that we have, that we can address them, you know, like, do you have anybody?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Tim, you were, you're gonna come up with that.
Uh, I was gonna talk about the IT situation that we have for our cybersecurity and our overall security for the town. Uh, I got notification just about a month ago that we have Dominion Tech right now, and Dominion Tech, uh, informed me that they're having a rate increase as of August first of, like, twenty percent. Um, I know when we were going through the whole cybersecurity, um, getting our firewall built and all, we went back and forth with them quite a bit, um, we had some difficult times, but we made it through it, then to get this twenty percent increase. So, it started searching around, I have until August first before the increase happens. And if I do something before August first, then okay, otherwise, I'm locked in till November first, because this is a yearly. We, we went, started with a three-year back in two thousand and eighteen, and then after the three-year was up, we then come on a yearly basis. They're no longer really offering the program I, that we belong to, called Essential. Um, they'd like to see us up the program and get more support, more education, um, be proactive at a cost of eighteen hundred dollars a month, at eighteen thousand a year. That prompted me to start looking for sure. I did follow, um, follow up on the tech group, who is also out of Burlington. Um, and also, I've also spoken to their representative that used to work for Dominion, but lot of Dominion, Dominion is becoming very large. Um, they don't usually like to handle small businesses anymore, they like the big ones. So, Domin, um, this, um, tech group that I've gotten in touch with can give me as much support, if not anymore, or I think on the last page, I might have sent the copy to you guys today, I'm sorry I've been late, I forgot to give it to you. Um, it would come for a total of a thousand and one a month. So, we would be looking at twelve thousand, twelve dollars a year, and that's for unlimited, um, support, remote support. Typically, that's a hundred and forty dollars an hour, if I were to resume them. That covers our emails, um, our backup, they will also do, um, it's called proactive, so they'll watch the age of our computers, recommend when we need to change our computers. It, it, it's the whole nine yards. So, my recommendation is, it's a five, five hundred dollar one-time onboarding fee. So, on the proposal that I sent you, she has a five hundred, that's a one-time fee, you'll come here for half a bit. Um, I'm looking at the six hundred and fifty-six dollars a month for the email security management, two hundred and twenty-five for our server, which eventually, he's hoping that we don't need a server. Um, and then I have a hundred and twenty dollars a month for, um, email security backup for all of our emails. Um, what else can I tell you about them? Where are they at? They are out of Burlington. South Burlington, which most of the ITs are, they do deal with fifty kilo other towns. They have Springfield, so, um, that alone made me feel really comfortable, um, knowing that they dealt with, they're dealing with a lot of municipalities. Um, their philosophy is, they like to, we kinda got pushed out of small towns out of the big IT groups, because they like to take on, you know, everything. Right, we, yeah, we are coming. We went to Dominia because Nemac had their IT, and we worked with Theo, Theo, um, Nemac decided to do away with IT. Theo went to Dominia, and we had such a great relationship with him. We kinda went to Dominia, then he left Dominia, Domin, and then we stayed. Um, and so, I'm just kinda following. I've called several others, and their prices are, everyone is increasing their prices. But this is a good deal, I think, and sound great to go with it.
Were you able to promote it with this?
I don't want to promote it, too, because that's a proposal, and if you could give Morgan authority to be able to sign that last page, and we're looking for a transition of July, the week of July nineteenth, to do this, so I make the deadline for the August first. Um, I'd like to go with a two-year agreement, um, if, if I find that this isn't overkill, and it's too, you know, we don't really need that much service, at any time, we can go down to the next level. Or if we pick the lowest level and decide we need to go to the other level, we can do that anytime or not. If I were going to a two-year, it locks this price in for the two years. If I go one year, then it comes time for renewal for the next year, I take the new prices if there is an increase. So, my eyes and all the experience we've been having in this last year, I just think of a two-year lock-in.
So, let me make a motion to.
So.
Except. We have a second?
Josh, I can, it's all reasonable, I mean.
I have a question. It's only a two-year lock, would be more, um, um, three-year or five-year one?
They only offer the one and two is all they offer so far. And if you could add on the motion for Morgan to sign it, give authority for Morgan to sign the proposal?
Yeah.
Do we have evidence, Megan? For me, it's a no way, or you're saving a thousand dollars, like, a little more.
You're gonna need it, but.
We have to have it, unfortunately.
That's the. That's the future, I guess, right?
Yeah. So, any other than this time? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Okay. Um, you always need the letter um, for the short-term rentals. And I think you will see the law, um, this, this, because that, this, I know that, uh, you complained about noise a couple of weekends ago.
I did.
Or something like that.
Yeah, I'm sure they did, or it wasn't good.
There was another complaint down here in town, so I figured that we need to do something. So, um, I thought that is, if there's any really, we should send where, who did it, who went to these things, or? Um.
The idea was to address it to each property owner and write in their address, so those blank lines, I would fill those in.
The, the problem seems to be that people are having parties and loud music at one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning. And they call the state, and they're in common, they call the sheriff, they don't.
But could you ask in that letter what Airbnb they know what, because you said a lot there, you wanted to answer.
I didn't mention any specifics.
No, we, we would just send it to whoever the owner of the property are.
But I'm asking all of those, all those properties, the state, what Airbnb?
What company it is?
Right.
You just Airbnb, VR, VR, VR.
Well, I can look at which ones are posted on. Look, in the list that I have of there.
But that's not gonna tell you what there is.
Well, if it's posted on, if it's posted on.
Yeah, excuse me?
How often do you know, of course, if, if they're on VR, VR lists, then you know they're on VR, or why are you asking me, you know they're on?
Because each VR, it can pull up to all different, expedia, trivia, whatever. It's a whole bunch.
But what's the first suspect?
Because each company has different specific things that the owner has to do to be on that thing. That's what I'm saying, but.
But if the letter goes to the owners of the, of the company.
Mm-hmm.
Call?
No, we're not, we're just saying, we saw your house was listed, right?
Yeah, I do have the, the list of Airbnb, uh, short-term renters, and I can, I can write on that list where I pulled their information from, whether it was Airbnb.com or VR, VR.
All right, I, I don't wanna approve the letter, but I want the board to, is everybody favored to do this?
Yeah.
And, because I, I'd like to see it refined a little more, but I mean, I don't wanna do anything if the board doesn't wanna send it inside.
There's no teeth to it, I think it's maybe an exercise, and, but.
Some kind of.
Sure, sure, do it, you know, you're gonna do something.
We gotta do something, we, we can't worry the, you know.
I, I agree.
And there is, there, there is, I mean, I, I thought there was a better ordinance for this, uh, night night, but it says, "Any person who, between sunset and sunlight, disturbs or breaks the public peace by firing a gun, blowing horns, or unnecessary and offensive noise shall be fined not more than fifty dollars."
I did call the first sheriff, first sergeant with the Women's County Sheriff's Department. They said there was an ordinance that had a very specific defined time, it was, this was off the top of his head, but ten p.m. until six a.m. was like quiet time, so they could get fined, um, but they updated their law, and it only says between sunrise and sunset, so it's based on.
But we have a, we have the ability now when the ticket goes to fine. So, if somebody does do this, then you can send them for a fifty-dollar fine, that would change it. I mean, that's, we have that.
Exactly, word.
Yeah.
Well, to get a complaint.
So, but how would that all, get a complaint, you drop it in the mail, someone knocking on the door, what, would, how would?
Maybe if I can actually. They had a complaint to Morgan, or to the board, and then the board could then write a letter to the municipal saying, we need to get out of fine, you know? I don't, I, I mean, you gotta do something. If, if you can't, everybody's got a problem, even New York City's got it.
Oh, sure, please, yeah.
New York City, you must, they wanna live it.
Sure.
And, and I've, I've read articles, I mean, this is nationwide, this is not, I think, Grafton or Chester, or whatever, they're, they become a real problem.
Well, we, yeah, it was gonna make.
So, I mean, Chester, Chester has an ordinance specifically to regulate it, and they charge a fee, an annual fee, if you're gonna rent in their town. And then, for the enforcement of the different mechanisms, either you can pay their fine, or that is a move. I mean, you get a court basically, that's how they approach it. But they have, they have a police force and everything, they have, they have, because they're all civil bodies, maybe the police go there and give them a civil ticket, but.
I mean, if they get off, do it, I mean, I, I'm not optimistic, it'll do a whole lot, but, yeah, you know?
All right, then, we'll just, we'll, we'll find the letter that we got.
Does it have to be an underlying ordinance to do this?
To send a letter up? No. But, but if you, you need an ordinance to be going.
Oh, fine.
You know, people have to.
There will obviously be fines, I think.
Yeah.
Make them register with us.
Yeah, that's not really ten.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's why we don't think they're gonna know it.
I mean. Right, right.
No, it's like this, that's the problem, when you say there's an ordinance, so if they don't do it, then, so you have to have an ordinance for the Airbnb.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, and I'm not saying.
You're not carrying for a year.
I'm not saying we should have stood it, but let's just take this preliminary step, and see if it'll have work, and then we can always talk about it.
Often, these Airbnbs, say how many people are in your ad, they'll hold ten people, fifteen people, fourteen people, and what happens? Um, people, like, one person went, and then filled that house up more than the ten people.
That's true.
And then you have, say, three-bedroom house.
Yeah.
Um, it's a thousand gallon thing, and it's over, the four-bedroom, it's the highest, that's the thing.
Yeah, Chester's ordinance describes the, the maximum number of people.
Right, right.
That's why I think we need an ordinance.
I, I, I guess, it's not that the Airbnb's are the different rentals, there, there's, there are people who own properties, who come up here and shoot guns all night, too, so couldn't there be an ordinance about noise, not just for the short-term rentals, but just in general for quality of life?
You mean, a noise owner in the town, yeah, we could do that. You're not a shooter.
I mean, you can enforce it, if you can enforce the Airbnb, you can enforce the, uh, subject, no, you think, but it would have it, but it's, yeah.
Well, all right, well, let's do, let's set the letter, but I, I, I think ultimately, we should have some kind of ordinance going forward, I mean, that, that's.
I circulated a, a memo about the, the Chester ordinance tomorrow, they're wanting.
Yeah, so.
I gave a recital, so we can look at it and see if they did it.
Well, which, which, I don't know, don't they have an ordinance if they're doing a wedding or a party, don't they have?
Ten o'clock.
It's.
It's not, well, it used to be ten, I don't know, I'm.
It's just, it's in there, it's very. They have, in all of their wedding contracts, they have, just like, be respectful of the neighbors, we ask that you quiet down after ten. We think it's ten o'clock. But I don't think it's any like normal.
But if they do an ice bar or something like that, is it extended hours?
No.
No, they, it's.
It's.
Oh, okay.
And, and I also recall, recall when, uh, the new owner, or the current owner of Biggers was looking for the two-fifty approval. Um, they were asked, I believe by, at two fifty, to limit any outdoor activity or noise, live music at, at ten o'clock, and that's.
Yeah, that's true, because I leased that farm a couple of years ago, and this, that's right in your conversation, too.
I'm sure that's a point, they had the same problem, right, well, yeah, but these are policies that individual businesses have, I mean, the town, it certainly doesn't have any, and I think would be a good idea, however.
But actually, fifty demanded that, we did.
Right, right, but it's just the individual residents, of course, a lot of it, sorry.
Well, if anybody knows any, any houses that are being rented on a regular basis, we can include that, I mean, I just, I, I wouldn't have a.
So, do I send the letter?
We're gonna redo it, and then we'll, we'll have the board approve it for the next meeting.
Who's gonna do it?
You, I'm gonna go over it, and then we're gonna say it's on the board, and then we're gonna.
Okay, okay.
They're gonna approve it.
I didn't know if I was putting it in the mail tomorrow.
No, 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 I didn't send anything out to the.
Okay, all right, good, we're good.
All right, I'll, I'll resend out this memo, and we can talk about this again, we have been talking about.
Yeah, I think, I think we put it back on the agenda again, I think it's, I think this is a world in the atmosphere to talk about.
Do you think it might be on by the end of the month?
What?
Like next week?
Yeah.
Well, it has to be approved by the board and everything.
On my, on my charity portal, I'm going to add a little address to it.
Okay, I just like to put the letter in myself.
All right, um, bridge replacement contract update? Can I do it?
Yeah.
Uh, last two, three I know is Carolyn. Uh, COVID and Jerry DeRosa Beach fans on lockup grid. Uh, they had received two bids. Which was within twenty nine thousand dollars with each other. But it was thirty eight percent. Over the estimate that the state had given to the grid. But they went to review board and went over it, and they came up with that, it'd probably be the best that they could come up with, it would do no good to re advertise it. It would probably get no bids or higher, so they recommended to the low bidder, who was older. Uh, COVID of, uh, Walco. And they wanted the town to okay.
So we have to go there?
Yes, you don't have a choice, I asked her, and she, she said, I, I said, well, what if we go, it's okay, and she says, well. There's a possibility, we could declare that that bridge is unsafe, and then you would be liable to hold ten million dollars. So, there was not much, because we had, yes, the bid committed six point eight million dollars. Uh, the contingencies and the engineering. Added to it, so it totaled nine, nine point five, nine point six. And which we're liable for ten percent, so we had paid, uh, a little over a hundred thousand dollars so far. And. We have. I think two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, in, uh, fund for that bridge. So we could go, probably, I would stick the ability, maybe approving it next year, what money we have before you have to. Uh, borrow or bond for it. And I think what you have to consider, probably somewhere down seven hundred thousand dollars. Either, either borrow or bond.
So what, we okay this, you think that's? Gonna be the summer price or anything?
I bet you that shouldn't be any more than that, they scheduled the start and if you like. But all they're gonna do is do some boring and approach work. Because the bridge is gonna stay too late. Through the winter, and then in the spring, it was stacked with the major work, and he finished in November. Twenty four. The polls, the polls, I, I stick to the polls are down the side below. And she said, well, they're scheduled for another month, well, they're only a year, so they were pushing forward without an okay.
Still, they're gonna do boring and what else?
Well.
They're gonna do boring and what else?
Bonding.
Bonding.
Either bond, it's a choice you have, either bond.
No, 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 they're gonna do, I think, have, have they gonna start the word, oh, boring?
Boring.
Oh, yeah. That's.
I thought you mentioned something else about.
It's a law we can't refuse.
Well, somebody might make a motion, we have a choice, and we have to accept it, so how long we.
We have, we have to get back by noon tomorrow night.
Right, yeah. So, what's the exact amount, you know what it is?
I'll get it.
A lot. Exactly, that was. One percent of my comp. There should be a motion.
Nine point five, one, two, five, one, six.
Okay. You got that?
Yep.
Okay. So. You made a motion, who's second there?
I'll, I'll second it.
Uh, we can have more, this is. We're gonna try them anyway. All favor say aye?
No.
Opposed? Okay, I mean, it's nothing, you can't give anything back, the way it is now. Okay, Ken, you're on, you're on the loan and.
The loan versus bond?
Yeah.
So, this is put on here, I'm just gonna give you a quick update, like come to find out, um, after talking with them, um, Carol, if I started on the meeting with John and Eric and Morgan. Um, major payments aren't gonna be needed probably until next fall. Uh, our next spring, before they really start getting into it. Uh, small amounts will be coming in when they start in July, so our two hundred and seventy, that's in our reserve. Should carry us, and she agreed to that that should carry us for the payments that might be needed to be made. Prior to that. So we don't really have to dive right into a, um, bond or a loan right now. I did make some calls to find out where we stand and what bank will accept us, so again. Um, I called TD Bank, um, TD Bank is not due a line of credit. Uh, which is kind of what I was leaning towards, is a line of credit, we do the town law, we vary with hundred thousand, and a line of credit for a year. Only paying interest on it, and then close it at the end of the building project and turn it into a loan. Uh, TD won't do that, and they won't go out any further than ten years. Um, community will go out fifteen years, they will give us a line of credit, in fact, they gave me an approval for nine hundred if I wanted. I said anything from seven to none. Perpetually. Uh, I've got the approval for that. Um, right now, interest rates aren't what they used to be, the town garage is two point six five, now we're looking at anywhere from four point five to five point two five. I don't know what it will be when we're ready to borrow. Um, bonding, and I had heard from, um, BLCT bonding, uh, they were off today. Um, everybody seems to think bonding is more for like, if you had a nine million dollar project, to them, nine hundred thousand is just a drop in the bucket. Um, that would be more, well, you have so many more, um, issues with bonding, you have to have a bond counselor to even begin starting a project. Uh, you have to have some of the meetings, starting advertising. There's a whole lot more to handle bonding. Um, interest rate could be a little bit better, but then again, they could not. Uh, and whether or not you can do a line of credit with them on a bond. I'm thinking not, but I don't know, I'm sure it's one time to the LCT, so now we have a little bit more time, we thought we were really pressured. Um, but after talking with Carolyn, we're not as pressured as we thought.
Well, maybe the interest rate come down.
It, that's a possibility too, but at least I know community banks have. Not a problem, but if, you know, they'll help us out between seven hundred and nine hundred thousand dollars if that's the case.
Did you, did you check with Walco bank, one of their names?
I did go into Walco, Walco is the savings bank, um, I'm not gaining more towards the bigger banks, like credit unions, well, two bones like that, and under. Um, TD does not. I meant she, uh, um. Uh, yeah, I meant she's not very, kind of. We got, we got, we're doing that, but I think you say that, but I don't, you know, we do the seventeen, but, um, yeah, so I'm not really switched.
What's the other thing in Walco, maybe it's a.
There's a. Yeah, and what's really hard is we don't have any kind of relationship, we don't get. The quick service and, and the, the flexibility. But, uh, the, a banking have relationships that are great with.
So, so it seems like. We really don't have a rush at this moment.
We don't have to.
So, we could keep exploring, maybe the interest rates will come down, we don't know what can happen.
Yeah, but we definitely, you know, we can be, we can, we can get something, we can, we can, without a problem.
All right. Okay, you're on, uh, which, you gotta open up the standard and occasion, but. So, which way do they defer?
Let's do standard.
So, there's only one for standard?
You know what name that?
I don't know off the top of my head.
You know what I know?
The only sandfill is from. Eastern Standard Gravel. Three thousand yards, nineteen ninety five per yard. For a total of fifty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
That delivered or?
I think you put, I think you put two and one for delivering and one for not over.
Was it nineteen what?
Nineteen ninety five per yard. It's like prices. Shall be delivered, so that must be a delivery. Then shall be delivered to the town garage, the two point bell road, by the bank the third.
That's so bad.
Well, that's delivered.
What was the, was that, fifty nine, eight, five, zero?
Uh, five, nine, eight, five, zero. He said twice, the contract held deliver top three thousand yards of nine sixteen sand to. Ride by the third amendment. Sand shall be free of loom, clay, and other form, subsequently free of large particles, just like the federal would have to provide it. Blah, blah, blah. Yeah?
Okay, so other policy, we don't accept bids tonight, right?
Right.
So, they all.
Uh, Mike will look over them.
Well, Mike will go over the net, I think I can get it from that.
So we didn't get anything for not deliver, we're getting all, just delivered. If that's with delivery, right, so he didn't have another bid without.
No, there's only one in there. All right, no second favor.
In the past, quickly, have you picked up?
What's that?
In the past, did the town? Not have delivered, but you go pick it up?
Well, I believe we were paying sixty thousand for it, and we were picking it up. I think it was in there.
We, we were, we were, we were picking it up for a long time.
The bid that we sent out, it said you, it's required to be delivered, uh, so it was expected that they deliver it to the town garage.
It says it twice, that it's delivered.
But Morgan is indicating that the bid went out at the delivered price.
Yeah, Palmer knows it's the, it's supposed to be delivered, but we.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Good deal. Paying all kinds of money for it. We did, if you're a nine million dollar person, pay more. All right, favor, this was Springfield favor. About this, so. Uh. So this. They broke it down in a, I guess this is ours, right? You broke it down in the. Three different.
Yeah, and then the front line should be the greatest.
Type four hot mix. Like, I don't know much about it. Uh, eighty seven point six five per ton for a total of fifty seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars and seventy five cents. Then they get the top three hot mix, top coat. Eighty six point six. Eighty six point six five tons. At hundred thirteen, two five, one point five five. Then the mill. Three dollars per SY, I don't know that is square yards.
Square yard.
Yeah.
Uh, thirty four thousand eight hundred forty eight dollars for a total, total bid is two hundred five thousand. Five hundred and ten and thirty cents.
Wait, what's that?
That was Springfield paving.
And insurance is in there?
And insurance as well.
Rich was insurance in the sand one too.
Guess what?
Was the insurance in the sand one as well?
Oh, I didn't see that, I don't think so.
No.
I don't think so, no, no.
They'll have to. Uh, you might have to sign a certificate.
Yeah, the next one's gonna be Bayzen Brother. The insurance is going on top, and this gentleman, Bayzen Brother. The total of two hundred and three thousand. Seven hundred and ninety four and eighty cents. And. I think the tons were a little bit different, I don't know. This one's a little cheaper, and he's saying a little more tonnage on the. Type four hot mix. A little bit more on the. Type three hot mix.
That's price per ton, we do it. Yeah. That's why Mike has to go take a look down.
Yeah, I, I.
Make sure that we're getting, we're not diving.
So what's the.
The overall price of two hundred three thousand seven hundred and ninety four and eighty cents.
Remember that, Bayzen?
Uh, that was Bayzen. Any assurances in there? Okay, the last but not least. I don't know who this is. But we will find out.
Okay.
Auto rescue, no more, we're gonna have to. They can track them themselves off. A lot of them too, might have a little bit, they, they got. Man. Eric's in there. And this is from, uh. EMI paving, they're out of Ritalboro. And quite a bit more, the bottom line is. Two hundred and ninety four thousand. Six hundred and eighteen dollars either.
All right, so Mike, take a look at all this stuff, and then you'll feel it in the next, if I have to move, so. Well, I don't know why it's on here, can wave, hopes that wave penalty thing?
Yes, um, each year when we, uh, produce our tax bill, which will be coming up in the next two, I think, to three weeks. Um, for those who did not file the HS one twenty two, like you're supposed to by April fifteenth, and then the state gives you to October fifteenth. But if you go after April fifteenth, they can impose a late fee, which is eight percent. And the towns have the option to just waive that and not charge them a late fee on top, on top of already. Having to pay their taxes. So, we've been waiving it for the last few years so that they don't get an additional charge because they filed after April fifteenth. And I'm asking again this year if we waive the late penalty. It's a box I have to check off when I do the taxes.
Why did they, why did they do it late?
Some people get extensions and don't remember to file the HS one twenty two prior to an extension. Not everybody files in twenty four thirteen, or they forget they have to do the HS one twenty two, and they do it after the tax. Um, but an eight percent penalty. Against tax bill is quite a bit.
Yeah.
Individual.
How many, how many bills? Are letting. Give it out?
If, if we did, if we didn't waive it, I might have had probably four individuals. And, um. It was pretty pricey for the four. Um, some you, you know that it, it would be okay, and others you know it would be quite a burden for them. Um, so we just kind of was like, okay, let's just waive it, it's so confusing anyways to so many people, especially those who are on social security and do not, even have to file a tax. But now we have to keep reminding them, you need to file a tax just what you can file in your HS one twenty two. And then to impose a tax on how, on, you know, on top of that for being late. It's. Yeah, the town does keep the eight percent, it's not like it goes to the state, but it does, I'm not there to compensate the charge and tax, but, yeah, that was. Hard times.
I believe you would like to say the people that have been late, uh, all are leaving on coin. I'll give it to you.
We'll wait.
How far things, yeah.
We've waited in the past.
We waived it the past.
It's not like they're not paying their taxes, no, they're not filing some.
They're filing late, or they're beginning to file that HS one twenty two, or their account.
I, I would, I'd rather delay the, like. All right, any, any of us, if not, all favor say aye?
No, it's aye.
Close? Okay. Um. Kobe, you wanna give the hydro report?
I'm just catching on grading with the good weather and mowing and, uh. Working on the over, on more porch growing out there. And, uh, some great hard rain ages in Rome. That's about it, as long as the weather from it said.
You, you have the trucks all back, everything is back?
Uh, no, we do have one truck still on. It's getting, uh, at least frankly there. And inspection, uh, other than that, everything is, uh, going, so. Mower's back going again. And, uh, grader back.
Are you gonna do a re-wracking?
Uh. Technically, well, I mean, you can, but I don't know. You get, you kind of have to give over it now because of poison bars and stuff, I mean. If one of, one of the guys gets it, then you're gonna put something down for a long time, you're gonna name of. While they're gone for a long time, so. I don't know. That'd be a question for Mike, I have, I have no idea about that.
Well, the past worker, his crew, he should do the bridges.
I'll be all part of that.
And we're working around the guy, Rose and stuff, but never really.
I don't think it's really. I don't think it's worth it, I mean, maybe in town. A couple places, but out on one twenty-one, out in the woods somewhere, be better off just mow it, just keep after rolling in. Otherwise, I just feel like it's gonna be a waste of money. Hopefully, it wasn't that kind, but for the three, it was about me back right now. And I gotta focus on the screen work and, uh. Especially grading, so yeah, everything would be graded if that, if it was raining.
So mowing is on once or twice?
What's that?
You do the mowing twice a year, once a year?
Again, I don't know, it's my first year here, so I don't know how many times I did it last year.
They just mow once a year. Yeah, but on the heavy, on the heavy. You know, you've got the.
Yes, the van, the van will be all about it. But the, the main drags, it's probably about a time that he gets, he gets around everything, it's. It'll be about it, yeah, I mean, one guy is probably taking most summer to get everything well. He got, have to put your hair down today. So. He's gonna start on, um. Out to the valley and work on the third five next. Get a little done, maybe mow the big ones twice, but other than that, a little side row, that's not. You can spend more time messing around.
All right.
Yeah.
That is, it's, it's. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah. Um, Ken, are you, something like, or is that, you want to?
Um, I don't have much other than the end of our fiscal year is coming. Um, I think I sent you guys a expenditure report today, just for you, just to look over, see where we're standing before. We have one more thing here and one more, um, AP to go through. Which falls exactly on June thirtieth, so that will end our fiscal year and let you know where. We're at, we're. It looks, it, it looks worse than it is, um. I don't know if anybody had looked at it yet or not.
I don't think it's that bad.
I, I mean, it, it's not bad, you can see where like town government is, um, forty-two thousand, I don't remember any overspend, we still have. One more to go. Um.
Yeah, Ken, did you go there and see where it happens there, will be flat?
Yeah, that, that's what I did, so we're not really, I mean, that forty-two thousand isn't in there, you know, again, just putting a slope in line. But I, I don't get all the areas, we actually have rent coverage of what we spent in town government of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-seven. So we got thirty-seven thousand that's charged for the expenditure, but it's sitting in the revenues this spring.
I went over it, it looks to be like it's about twenty-five thousand dollars left in the last two weeks.
Exactly, that's about, because we have some reserve that's covering it also, so, um. And on the other side. It's pretty close, um, we do have some flood that was in there that's gonna be. You know, that, there's return to that, and there are some.
Remember.
At all, I think you're gonna be. Well, just about right.
Remember, that, 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 that was not in the budget.
Right, exactly, yeah, so, um. Um, and, um. Also, I'm not sure how we follow meetings and setting the tax rate. So as soon as grievances are done, and we have a final grant list. And June thirtieth, when the educational tax rate, we provide the two, um, the municipal tax rate will have to be set. And approved by the board before any print tax goes.
Well, we'll, we can have a special meeting.
We may have to have, just like, you know, we may have to have a special one, just so I can get tax bills done by the second week of July.
Correct. Okay. Uh. Personal, do you have anything, I know we don't want to do a good session, but say anything to.
We didn't meet. With, um, Kobe and Dave today. Still have to meet with, um. And Morgan, who did speak today, and, um. Still have to meet with Mike. But he's out. And the reviews. We did good fun. And we'll talk more. Um, then executive.
Correct. Do we have any other business?
Uh, did you want to tie around the holiday?
No, we didn't.
Um, Michelle from the library stopped it and mentioned about Juneteenth as the holiday. And, um, had just said that. Uh, forty percent of states were recognizing it as a holiday, um, so. Didn't, just wanted to bring it to your attention, she's bringing it to the library board. I think hoping for the day as a holiday.
And next year, yeah, because it's federal. Post offices, there goes, the banks and boats, and we did have. I don't know, five or six people hired you all today, it's. I mean.
Is it a Vermont holiday? No, it's federal holiday.
It's a federal holiday.
I thought so. The governor signed something today. Thought so.
Yeah, I probably did, but it's like the state is not working on Juneteenth Day, the V L C T, they're not working, and the banks and the. Post office is not, so students, we should school.
So.
Yeah, schools are closed also.
So I might understand that she wants the town to have, have a holiday.
She was just inquiring, didn't know, she thinks we should consider it, because she's gonna take it to her board and want to have a consider it, something to be brought up.
Can the last person, if somebody's doing with that?
It doesn't have to be decided. I said, it doesn't have to be decided right now, just, just brought to you.
Uh, any others? All right, comment? Go ahead.
So my public comment pertaining to the next agenda, I have about the next regular meeting of. July third.
It will be, it'll be on July four, I'm sure.
Probably not.
The fourth is a Tuesday.
Right.
Monday is July third.
So when I'm like, then we can.
We have a meeting, yeah, so I just wanted to mention that that is the night of the traditional V S O concert. Uh, they begin starts at five thirty, concert at seven thirty, hope that everybody comes. I mean, if you guys wanna have a meeting at six o'clock, you can still make it to the concert.
Or you, you wanna. It's. You, you know. Well, then, then you gotta do that once.
Why can't you do it the next Monday?
Yeah, maybe we just do it earlier.
Pretty much like.
I mean, you could do it five o'clock.
Four, or four.
But in a way.
It's a holiday, we'll allow people, folks, uh.
So what, what is your pleasure? We had kind of a meeting, so the question is, do you want to do it?
What about the next one?
Is it gonna hurt you to, to skip it and then go to the second day?
Because of the tax rate. Well, I was just saying, if you did, that definitely might double sweet and tax rate in the same time, I'll have to check if the listeners in there have it.
Well, whatever you wanna do, it's my own day. So you're.
For what?
What, have any?
No, I, August, probably nineteen thirty.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the state sends that to me, yeah, Brad Jane sends it to me. Um, and on that, like a thirty, it's the listeners, whether they'll be done with the grant list, which I think they're anticipating being done, and then we could go to burn for one star.
Well, it. So if July fourth is on a Tuesday, what, what is the tax, when, when we get, when we have to hold it?
Uh, the following, let's see, so the third, uh, I would like to print them by the ten, I have to have them in the mail by the fifteen, it's gotta be.
Well, so why, why do we have a meeting on the tenth? Monday the tenth.
If they didn't tell me.
I kind of have to have the municipal rate. I mean, that means I can't print them on Monday, um.
Will you say, oh.
Right, it's, it's, we, you know, Tuesday, Thursday. Should be done.
When do you do the fifth?
At six.
What the? Is that okay with everybody? What was it?
July fifth of sixteen.
The sixth, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other comments on that? Okay, so the next regular meeting will be on, um, Wednesday, July third. That's staying here. All right? Now we need a motion to go into executive session, I can deal with that, that's our activities. Thank you, Evan, thank you for coming, everybody.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two, four six three, one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV. Keeping government honest.